Alright, I started the recording. Uh, just Spite Knight, just you know, we record these, no big deal, no pressure, none of that. Uh, just so that we have, it's a resource that people can look back on. Um, so last week, we looked at really basic endings and then imbalances, what are imbalances? Let's remind ourselves, what are imbalances? Who remembers what an imbalance is?
Oh man, the recording's too much pressure. Um, let's see, material, uh, king safety.
No, no, not like, not like list off all the imbalances, like literally what is an imbalance?
And a thing that's different.
Yeah, it's something, it's something different in the two positions.
It's turning into an English class.
I know, right? Um, so today, we're gonna be focusing on one of the largest imbalances, which is the imbalance of the minor piece, the bishop versus the knight. Uh, and they're good in very different situations. So, uh, let's start off with just a general discussion, we're not gonna look at any positions quite yet. Uh, let's just start off with a general discussion of what makes, uh, what are the strengths of a knight?
Um, I mean, a well-placed knight in a closed position is a very good piece compared to a bishop.
So, awesome, why?
Uh, because it, in a closed position, whereas a bishop would not cover a lot of squares, the knight would cover a lot of squares and attack those squares which the bishop cannot get to.
Good, yeah, so, uh, we hear this sort of chess platitude, knights are good in closed positions and bishops are good in open positions, and we sort of accept that just as true. But it's important to understand why. Um, and I think you sort of hit the nail on the head. Knights, uh, in closed positions, they can still reach other squares, cuz they jump over things. Whereas bishops, if the position's closed, hey, I'm hitting a wall, this is fun. I can't go over anything. Um, what are some other strengths of a knight? What are knights good at?
Forks.
Forks, always good. Um, yeah, we've all, we've all fallen victim to the, the good old knight fork. Um, I would say knights are, uh, one really important function of a knight that we always need to be aware of, is knights are incredible at blockading past pawns. Um, if the opponent has a past pawn, it's almost always that we want our knight, uh, to be the piece that's blockading the past pawn. Um, yeah, we got it, let's jump into this study. So, I'm posting the study in the general text chat, uh, so if we can all load this up. Also, determination, just so you know, if you're trying to speak, your microphone is muted.
Yep, I'm just finishing something up, I'll be, I'm physically here, but, uh, need a minute to wrap things up.
No worries, I was, I was just, uh, informing you in case you were, uh, trying to let us know all of your wisdom. Um, are we all in this study?
Yeah, looks like it.
Yeah, so, uh, the first example that Silman gives, uh, is just an example of the tricky knights and, uh, as Something Pretentious said, uh, sometimes we get forked. Uh, so if you wanna quickly play through the game, uh, as it happens, uh, you'll see that, that white ends up getting mauled by a, by this rampaging knight that jumps all over his face. And note that, um, white in this game was none other than vishy anon'd. So, getting forked happens to the best of us. Uh, yeah, this was just an example Silman gave, I don't think it's very useful, just a fun little story. Even pros get forked, how sad. Um, great, let's look at chapter two. So, chapter two is really what, um, Spite Knight was talking about. And how knights dominate enclosed positions. Why is the knight so much better than the bishop in this position?
It can attack the, uh, the opponent's pieces or pawns in this case.
Yeah, so, um, then both pieces are blockading, uh, past pawns, right? The knight is blockading this f5 past pawn. Um, can you guys see the circles that I'm drawing, by the way?
Yeah.
Great, uh, but the bishop is blockading, I'll, I'll make these blue. The bishop is blockading the, the c5 past pawn, but hey, this is a knight, right? He reaches over. Uh, this bishop, not so much, he doesn't reach over anything. So, the knight serves much better as a blockading piece, and this is part of the reason why, as, uh, Spite Knight said, the knight is better in closed positions, cuz it can reach over and jump over into the opponent's positions. And if you play out the game, you'll see that this is utterly hopeless for black, because the white king comes in and black can do nothing to stop it. And that's just GG. So, the better minor piece here leads to a winning position for white. Obviously, this is, um, sort of an overboard example, where the, the white knight is incredibly powerful and the black bishop is incredibly terrible. But that shows the strength of a knight versus a bishop. Chapter three. Oh, this was a, this was from a game that I played at the club. This is, um, Hellner Bellows, uh, I had black. And I'd like all of you guys to take a minute and try and come up with a plan for black in this position. So, uh, now that we've taken a little, at least a little bit of time here, let's see, um, I don't want exactly a move, but does anyone have a plan for how black could improve his position?
So, my first thought was, um, getting the knight either to e4 or e6, um, so practically blockading or a good outpost square. Um, but I can't really see a good path to get there, this is kind of off, it's kind of offside at the moment.
So, I think, uh, that's a really good plan, right? Because, uh, uh, Pretentious hit on a couple things. A, the knight's not super thrilled about being on b6 right now, it's not really doing anything. Um, and we know that light knight, li-li-li, knights love to blockade past pawns, and they also love to be on big outpost squares, like e4. So, let's make it happen. How are we gonna get our knight to one of those squares?
Knight d7.
Hmm, but then that drops the, uh, the b pawn.
Uh, you can take on e5.
And tactics!
Yeah.
Tactics, tactics, tactics.
So, the structure's not as important as you would think, but, anyway.
I, I would say that, uh, although this, this may not even be better for black, uh, black has sort of solved some of his problems of his knight is terrible. And this goes a little bit, um, into what Silman talks about in chapter four in his psychological chapter, where we had a plan, right? We wanted to get our knight to e6 or e4, and the logical move is knight d7. But then, we sort of dismiss that, oh, we hang the pawn. Eh, not so fast. If we have a plan, it's our job to make it work, make it work. And so, Determination was like, okay, knight d7, queen b7, oh, but I see here, I have tactics. So, Determination made our plan work. And so, after knight d7, um, black has this rerouting, and he's probably still, doesn't have a great position, but it's at least manageable. Any questions on chapter three? No, sirree? Grand. Chapter four, uh, is another example of blockading.
Actually, actually, sorry.
Uh, chapter three, yes.
Can you go back? What, uh, which way would, just an interesting question, which way would you take back if they capture your bishop on e4?
After knight d7?
Um...
Just generally speaking.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, actually, after, you can't take with the d pawn, cuz then there's the fork.
Um...
I'm just thinking, so if, if bishop takes, and then the d pawn takes.
Yeah, so this-
Oh no, cuz the bishop's, yeah, that's fine, the file's blocked. I was thinking, after the queen trade, then you've got the fork, but the kings. I was thinking the rook is backing it up, but it's not.
Yeah, yeah, um, I think this, this probably is the more logical way to take back. I feel like after this, I'm a little bit worried about, um, a storm coming. This rook is pretty well placed behind the f pawn.
Yeah, okay.
Although, I will say, I'm not convinced that trading is ever good for white. Uh, excuse me, because it leaves, um, it leaves white with a not, with a pretty bad piece.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I-
I don't know, the, you go ahead.
No, no, I, I was just gonna, I was just gonna repeat, I think trading, trading is not really desirable for white.
Yeah, I'm just looking at forcing moves.
After d takes, you have this kind of semi-fluid. Uh, you know, maybe the d pawn will be able to advance, and black's bishop won't, oh, sorry, white's bishop won't be so bad.
That's true, but so, maybe there is some validity to playing on trading, playing f takes. Uh, however, then maybe the bishop can come here, but even, even on d2 with f5, um, it's, it's not a awe-inspiring piece.
Right, right.
The only reason I'd say d pawn would be better is because white can double the rooks quite easily and use the f5, or at least here, I can fight for the 5.
I agree with that, uh, I think this looks a little bit nor, more natural to me. Um, but a, as Determination said, I think there's, there's pluses and minuses to this in that, um... I don't know, can we play this right away? No.
Hmm, no.
That's ridiculous. Um, so then, uh, in this position, white either has to trade queens or let the queens come off, or move the queen, and then, you know, black has a little bit of time to set up a, a defensive structure. In fact, here, say, uh, say white plays like queen d1, uh, trying to avoid the queen trade, I feel like the knight could come back to b6 even, and come back in.
It's interesting that, like, that we're changing plans there, because I feel like, um, the knight on d6, oh, sorry, e6 would be very well placed, uh, fighting, you just, so rather than, well...
I, I think, I think this is also a good move.
And then just rook a d8, this sort of thing?
Yeah, I mean, uh, this, this cannot be a bad move either for black. I just wanted to go to c5, which I think is also a good square for the knight.
Hmm.
Or c5, d5, um, what am I, what am I even saying? Um, that also seems like a good square for the knight, but, you know, this would also be a very good square for the knight.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, good question, I, I, that's why, I think in all these positions, when I see the, the bishop trade happen, I feel like black has gained something. Um, I feel like white's most active plan here is to play for like g4 somehow.
Directly here, yeah?
Uh, yeah. Oh, g, g4 right away?
Yeah.
You could. Because the, the bishop on e4 hangs, that's an interesting idea. Yeah, this might cause black some problems, eh, maybe black has to play something a little bit silly like g6, which would make me a little sad. But anyway, um, this is sort of beyond the scope of the, the discussion of the knight. Um, here, I think knight d7 gives black, uh, at least a manageable position, because the knight will come to some sort of nice square. Good, let's look at chapter four, chapter four is another really simple, basic example that Silman gives. What should white play in this position?
Uh, what should black play rather?
Uh, well, okay, it's black to move, but nothing he does will make any difference. Um... Black, black plays, plays this, congrats, what should white play?
Knight d3.
Knight d3, we blockade the past pawn, uh, and white is winning, just cuz he has the better minor piece. Uh, so using this knight as a blockader, super key idea, happens all over chess. Great, we can blockade with knights. Alright, chapter five. Uh, this shows another difference between the two pieces. How many moves would it take the knight to attack a6?
Four?
Four. We can go, you know, numerous ways, but this seems good enough to me. It would take four moves to attack the a6 pawn. How many moves is it gonna take the bishop to attack the a6 pawn?
One.
One! Uh, so, we, we learn here, the knight is a very short-range piece and the bishop is a very long-range piece. So, that's why, um, one thing we talk about i- in terms of knight is outpost squares, because knights really need to be up close and personal. And in order to get up close and personal, they have to move up the board. Uh, so if you give them an outpost square, they get to stay up the board, where they're very happy. And that's why giving knights outpost squares is so important, because if they're not close to the battle, they're not doing, they're not as effective. Whereas the bishop, a bishop on a1 can be a killer piece. So, uh, bishops are super, super long-range pieces. Great, chapter six. Um, this shows, uh, Silman goes through here and talks about, uh, the position of knights on different ranks. So, what does the knight do on the first rank?
Stops us from getting checkmated.
The knight on the first rank is often a key defending piece, does anyone know the, the rhyme? The rhyme that I love? No?
Heard it before, but I can't recall it.
Is it knight on f8, there is no mate?
Knight on f8 can't be mated. Um, if you, uh, knight on f1, uh, there will be none mate, I don't know. Um, so, uh, the knight on the first rank, it's not a very great piece, but it's a, can serve as a key defender. Here, we're not getting mated, and we're really happy our knight is on f1, because otherwise, we'd be very sad. What's a knight on the third rank do? This is one of the most common positions for the knight.
Influence the center.
We control key central squares, maybe we'll jump in, maybe we'll play e4. Uh, so that's why we love putting our knights on c3 and f3. Uh, have you ever been to like a scholastic tournament? Has anyone ever been to a kids' scholastic tournament?
Not for a long time.
Not for a long time. I, I know that, um, I, I, I go to a good amount of scholastic tournaments, not as a participant, but, uh, cuz I, I coach some kids. Man, every game, knight f3, knight c3, there's so many knights on, on, oh, that's not how knights move. There's so many knights on f3, c3, f6, and c6, and it's just really a good, solid place to put all your knights, cuz they control all these center squares, and we're like, yay, we've controlled the center. I swear, I would, I would say maybe two-thirds of games at scholastic tournaments are four knights openings. There's so many four knights. It's sort of incredible, because we all love putting our knights on f3 and c3 and f6 and c6, and we're gonna control the center. So, knight on c3 controls the center, we love it. Chapter seven. Knight on the fourth, what's it do?
Blockades.
Um, here, it, it does blockade, uh, I would say it's not as key, because this is not a past pawn technically. Um, but it, it is blockading, what kind of square is the knight on?
An outpost.
It's on an outpost. Um, how do we know it's an outpost?
Pawns that can attack it.
Yeah. Uh, the c and e files are clear. So, that means there's no pawns, uh, that can attack the knight, so it's on an outpost, it can't be moved. Uh, what's black's really big problem here?
His bishop.
What about his bishop?
It's terrible. He has the d5 pawn, which, all of the time, and the bishop can never be activated.
Uh, the, the bishop is terrible, I think, for two reasons. One, the, the d5 pawn is, is killing it. And two, the bishop can never take the knight on d4, what a disaster. Black would love to play bishop takes knight, if only, right?
Flipping this question around, what is the knight on d4 doing?
What is the knight on d4 doing?
It's on an out-
So, the knight on d4-
It's on an outpost, but-
It's threatening to jump, um, to really any square it wants to. Um, another thing the knight on d4 could do is come to f4 and exert more pressure on the d5 pawn. Also, if I really want to, I can take on e6 if I get some tangible benefit from that. Uh, obviously, I wouldn't do that right now. But I think, uh, white can just sort of sit, right? He doesn't have to make something happen here. He can just shuffle around until, uh, in fact, I think, say, say I play this.
Hmm?
Uh, wha- what would you play as black?
Bishop f5?
Hmm? Here?
And... I mean, I can be annoying with bishop c2, but I don't think it's actually, well, maybe, let's see.
What's your, what's your point?
Yeah, no, I don't really have one, uh, like, black is statically worse, right? We talked about that last week.
Yeah.
Long-term, black has zero prospects. So, I'm trying to come up with something active, but I don't think there's anything active to do either, so... I'm just, I don't know, I'm trying to find the best place to put the bishop that, uh, maintains some semblance of activity while holding the d5 pawn.
I think what's, what's such an issue about this position is there's literally no square where the bishop can be useful.
Hmm, put it on c4, and then play minority attack with...
So, you wanna play bishop b3 here?
Still not good, but, black at least has, uh-
Let me do this.
Yeah, sure, bishop c4.
Hmm?
And, a5, b5, probably a5.
Hmm?
Better move to start with. Yep, 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 and... Can I play g5 with tactics? Cuz you're, you're not actually threatening to take on d5, right?
Um-
If I just pass?
That could be true. I might be actually, let me take this.
Why, yeah, why not?
So, rook takes.
I have knight f6.
Yeah, or e7.
Oh no, my, my pe, my pieces are not lined up correctly for this. Uh, hmm, no, that doesn't work.
Yeah, just takes on d5.
Cuz I was doing, gonna do, I was gonna do c4, but there's always queen c4.
Right.
So, that doesn't work. Okay, so, uh, you're right, I'm, I'm not threatening to take. Um, and g5, uh-
If you're not threatening to take, I don't need to play g5 either, but-
That's, that's true.
G5 is weakening.
G5 is maybe a little bit annoying for me though, cuz I, I don't really wanna let you trade your bishop.
Hmm, oh, for sure.
Which might oblige me to play something like this, but then my knight's on h5.
But is that so bad? Like, you can switch targets now, to, like, bishop offside on the queen side.
Um, that's very true.
Hmm, and I just wanted to raise the point that an outpost square by itself isn't necessarily on b6 or something, but you're attacking the king side. You know, a, an outpost-
Say again, sorry, I, I missed that.
Uh, an outpost doesn't necessarily coordinate well with the play that you're trying to create.
Absolutely. Um, so, Determination's bringing up the point that like, this knight on d4, eh, looks great, but if it's not doing something, then it's not really a good piece. However, I, I would argue that, in this position, the threat of it going to f4, plus you always have to reckon with this, which could be very annoying.
Hmm?
Um, in fact, uh, no, that doesn't win a pawn outright, but it comes close, right? Uh, cuz thi- this is close to being annoying already.
Hmm, I was just, so, the knight may have been very useful earlier in the game on d4, stopping-
D5, or d4 itself.
Right, and so, that's why the knight may be here, but over the next ten moves, I would be very surprised if we didn't see white find a better job for the knight.
Yeah, I think it'll come out to f4, I think that's the, um, the most logical place, just to pressure this more, uh, and switch the, the rook to the outpost square, uh, to keep that blockade on that pawn.
Sure, plenty of ideas.
Hmm?
I mean, white could even, white could even play a king side attack here with-
Oh yeah, totally.
With your, with your plan quirks, is white ever threatening to take that pawn? Because, I mean, they can have four defenders and we have four attackers.
Uh, let me-
And then we, we're never playing c4.
Let me, let me be better at chess. Um, and when you play bishop c2, let me do this.
Okay, um, I mean, same plan, I guess?
Great, and I have to organize the pieces the way I want to.
Yeah, so here-
Which means I want a gun.
Yeah, but then you have to get the bishop out of b3, which is, I mean, you can play knight c1 if you want to, but... Maybe you're gonna give away counterplay. Um, I feel like I'm pretty well-equipped to answer that question. Long-term, white just wants to exchange off the heavy pieces if he can, like, there's two major plans. One is to create the gun against this guy, and then push c4 with a pin.
We can't see your moves or arrows if you're drawing stuff.
We, let's see.
Can you add him as a member?
Yeah, I'd have to be a member to be able to-
A member?
Yeah, on the study, yeah.
Yes, give me a silondo.
Gotcha. Yeah.
How do I do that?
If you click in, where it says chapters, click on member, and then, uh-
Oh, yes, 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 ha, 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 ha. Ah, ha, 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 ah, ha, ha, ha.
Thank you, okay. Um, so two overall, I did queen pawns in the endgame. Uh, one is, if we can imagine that all of these pieces disappear, then we have this bishop against this knight, which is, you know, everything this lesson is about. Um, and these can be very dangerous endgames for white. I can, oh, sorry, for, for the side with the bishop. On the other hand, if this were a dark square bishop, this endgame would be already just, uh, drawn. The other one is, in the middle game, we can, as, uh, Quark is pointing out, we can triple here and create the pin. Um, but if we're gonna do that, the knight would probably be best on e3. Uh, sorry, the eventual goal here is to play c4 when black cannot recapture because of pins here.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? So, I think in order to do that, we need probably bring the knight to e3 so that it supports both of these squares.
Hmm?
That's, I don't know, uh, that's one reason I mentioned the king side attack.
Yeah, I'm looking at the move, uh-
Is because I don't think-
Rook 2d3 here.
If we, if we get the knight to e3 first, then it prevents bishop c4.
Yeah, but it's a long way to e3.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you have to do that before you move the rook up, cuz otherwise it's just-
I started with knight d2, I, I can start with this move.
Right, this is interesting as well, um, may have its own sort of problems.
I don't know, can, can, is this a thing?
Knight takes, no?
I'm an idiot. Hey, please ignore.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, let's see, we could do... Maybe there's tricks with queen b8, queen c7, just getting this lined up tactically? I don't think it, probably it doesn't work, but-
I mean, even if we trade queens, I don't know if that, that's so good for black.
Right, right, no, I'm thinking, uh, in conjunction with d4. So, if we go like here, 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 because of this, this discovery.
Cuz of the check.
Right, um...
I can always play pawn takes, you know?
Yeah, but, hmm, yeah, probably, touch shots and everything. Yeah, transferring the knight to e3 is really nice, and the other-
Let, let, let's put that on the board, just so people can see what we were talking about. Determination was, was looking at tricks related to d4 here, and the point being, if white plays rook takes, black has this, it's a discovery. Um, and if white tries to save the queen, check, uh-oh. Uh, that's bad news. But I was thinking that after d4, we have pawn takes. And white's just a pawn up, I think.
Um, let's see here for a second.
I know, bishop b3, is that a thing?
Maybe, but also, oh, looking at this, now that it's on the board, can I take here with this discovery? And now you're the one with the isolated pawn?
Let, uh, god, I don't know, let's see. Uh, do, okay, this is devolved into tactics, uh- Do, okay, this is devolved into tactics. Uh, do I have this?
Uh, I can just take it again?
Yeah, but now...
But then rook g6 still?
Oh, cause it comes with check. Huh. Yeah. Good point.
Turns out we were trading tactics the whole time?
Yeah, so, um, I think it's, it's in White's best interest to avoid any crazy craziness, and after queen...
Bringing this back to last week, like, we were talking about being statically better.
And not allowing any counterplay whatsoever. So on something like this, I mean, we can just play like, you know, something sensible. Maybe that's not the best square, but... Uh...
Cause you want to, you want to be attacking the pawn without being in the way of the rooks.
Yeah, I, I wanna be in the... I wanna, I wanna sort of gun setup. Uh, I don't know, oh, so let's play, um, oh, just kidding, let's play, let's play this, this is good.
Yeah.
No, no d4 for you.
Well, we can also talk about the other plan, like, playing for the kingside attack with rook g3 immediately. I think maybe the strongest setup here.
In, uh...
Because...
Can you show me how in this position? Oh, rook, rook e3?
Yeah, we should play rook d3.
Oh, rook d3, excuse me, I heard rook g3 and I was, I was so confused, I was like...
Yeah, so, yeah, I want to come here.
Hmm, yeah.
But, um, and the point is just, all of Black's pieces are tied to the defense of this, and if we're able to... One of the best ways to exchange pieces is to force your opponent's pieces to defend.
Yeah.
Your active pieces, right? So, by doing this, we note all of the exchanges favor us as long as, uh, these pieces are left on the board. And so, now we're going to force Black to find a way to exchange off our very active attacking pieces.
Any further questions on this, uh, knight on the fourth position? Nah? You're, you're allowed, you're allowed to speak. Alright, silence, silence is a no. We're going to chapter 8. Knight on the fifth. Good lord, what a monster. What's our knight on the fifth doing on chapter 8? Determination's not allowed to answer.
Sorry, I missed the question. What was the question?
On, in chapter 8, what's our knight on the fifth doing?
Blockading.
Blockading? Yeah, what's wrong with this e6 pawn?
Backwards.
It's backwards. What does it mean for a pawn to be backwards?
Uh, it can't be defended by another pawn.
Can't be defended by another pawn, and that's not all that you need for a pawn to be backwards.
Hello?
You cut out there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I said, uh, yeah, so it's not defended by another pawn, and there's another requirement for a backwards pawn. For a pawn to be considered backwards, it has to be on an open file.
Oh, really? I didn't know that.
A semi-open file.
Hmm.
That's the definition I heard.
I learn something new every day. That's fine, that makes sense.
Um, just cause otherwise, it's, it's sort of untargetable, but untargetable by the heavy pieces, which makes it, uh, if you can't target with the heavy pieces, it's very difficult to attack it. There are some positions with a, with a sort of weak pawn, uh... I wouldn't call it backwards, though, like, uh, positions in a, a bononi with the pawns on, uh, d5 and d6, where the d6 pawn gets kind of weak. But, um... The, I wouldn't call that pawn backwards on d6. I would just call it a weak pawn. Uh, but anyway, yes, this is a backwards pawn, textbook backwards pawn, it's on a semi-open file, there's no pawns defending it. It can't possibly be defended. And, um, we gotta worry about this knight. We got some worries. How's Black's knight doing?
So good.
So good.
Yeah, it's, it's really happy. It's just chilling.
It's so happy to be on c7, the most active square. So I will say, uh, this isn't the worst knight the world has ever seen. Um, but what's the issue if this knight comes into d5?
The c4. Although, actually...
We can always play c4. Um, I think there's another issue with the knight jumping into d5. The knight's actually...
E6 gets very weak.
Yeah, the, the knight's actually doing something, uh, vaguely important on c7. It's defending e6.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so if the knight jumps out of, uh, c7, then we can start thinking about moving our knight and revealing our, our battery against e6. So, um, that's a knight on the fifth. When your knight is on an outpost on the fifth, life gets very, very hard for your opponent. Great. Knight on the sixth. How's Black doing here?
Hmm, cramped.
A little cramped, right?
Yeah.
Um, what, what's Black's issue?
Or isn't.
What, what is not an issue? Yeah, so, let's, uh, let's, let's take a moment here. Let's do a full evaluation by imbalances, just to see why Black's position is so terrible. Uh, so what imbalances do we have?
Space.
Space! That's some space there. Oh, man, that's rough. Uh, what other sorts of imbalances we got?
Knight bishop.
Knight bishop, that's the main one we're talking about. Thematic, uh, thematic, uh, imbalance, good. How's our king safety?
Uh, there, there's some dark squares around Black's king. White's king could be better, but there's, it's such a closed position that...
I think king safety is, I think, is about equal, right?
Black, Black, like, White has a plan of, like, swinging a rook over, but I don't know. Cause Black's kind of tied down on the queen side, so I'd say Black's actually a little less safe, but it's pretty close.
I think, I think that's, um... Yeah, valid. Uh... Anything else? Active pieces? Well, active pieces has to do with this bishop and knight, right? Um, that's clearly the, the, the imbalance in active pieces.
You can argue that White's rooks are more, or White's rooks have the potential to be more active, because you can...
I agree with that.
Yeah, I remember reading a while ago the definition of activity being the number of squares like, attackable. So like, the queen here, the black queen's attacking three squares, or can cover three squares, so it's terrible. Or four if you count the knight.
That's a cool definition. I like that.
It's usually, it's like, useful to see whether it'll be better on a different square, like, what's it doing?
Yeah.
Yeah. It also helps you, I like that definition, I've used it before, um, for some of the students that I teach, because it also helps teach about good and bad pieces, like, why a knight on h1 is so terrible.
Mm-hmm. And why, why a knight, like, in the center is so awesome.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a cool definition. I, I like that a lot, actually. Um, I just wanna point out, I really like how, uh, how Silman handles this position. Um, we have this dominating knight, uh, on d6, and it's never going away, right? It literally can't be taken by anything other than a rook or queen, which would not be good. Um, so Silman just says, "My knight's on d6, it's never going away. I'm gonna triple on the a file, and you, you're gonna lose."
Mm-hmm.
And this is just...
That's interesting.
This is a standard plan when you control the tension on a file. Um, he can just set up a gun on the file, and then Black cannot, like, set up a countergun because he doesn't have enough space.
It's funny that you say that, cause my plan would immediately have been play a5 and attack on the king side.
Yeah, man, what is that? Or, uh...
Oh, I was expecting to be wrong, but if Determination agrees with me.
No, no, I, I really like that. I guess my...
Well, I think, I'm not saying Silman's plan is the best plan or the only plan. Uh, in fact...
It's a standard.
Uh, it is a standard plan when you control the tension on a file, on the, especially an a or h file. Um, a- a- and you have more space. Um, a standard plan is to set up either a double or a triple on the file before you open the file.
Hmm. Yeah, I think it does work here, it just doesn't occur to me. It's, I'm learning.
I think, recognizing this, this pawn structure, this pawn structure is very indicative, where, where White has, like, sort of broken, uh, the Black structure and is ready to open. This is very indicative of that plan of tripling. I'm sorry, Determination, what were you gonna say?
Bonus points if you consider the reply a5.
After rook a3? Uh, after rook a3, Determination? A5?
Yeah, I mean, it's not...
It's something.
It's not really anything, but it's, it's always something that you have to consider.
Absolutely. I've been, I've been burned by this sort of stuff before. Let's look at it, it's interesting. What if I do this?
Uh, just take back there, and now my bishop on c6 might not be so terrible?
Or take back the other, with the other one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Take back the b pawn.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
I was, I was going for some tactics there.
Yeah, yeah, this is my fear, like, it all just collapses and you've lost all the control.
Rook a3, a5, let's, let's find a good move for White here. Um...
So you don't wanna take on b5, so you should probably take on a5. Um...
I, well, I'm thinking, I'm asking, I'm asking myself, do I need to take anything?
I mean, the b pawn.
It's either support the b pawn or take.
B not hanging.
So you can play the queen c3 or something, but I don't know. I like the position of the queen better on c2, just it seems like any...
After, sorry, after supporting it, then Black can take the b pawn and then take on a4 with the rook, no? And then, and then their bishop can, like, move.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but c6 is always going to require attention. And the bishop doesn't have a stable square to support it. Like, the, the bishop would need to come all the way around to d5, and as long as you don't ever give the bishop the squares to do that. We could also take on a5, like, rook takes, and I was looking at something like knight e4 or something else to play on that kingside attack. Or just doubling on the d file as well, cause I think that's something we haven't mentioned, is we have control of the a file, but the d file, d file's already open.
That's true, and also, when the rook moves off of a8, that weakens, uh, the d file even more, cause there's potential pinning ideas against the rook. Um, so now, uh, that makes this sort of move even more attractive to me. Maybe not in this position exactly, but I don't know, are, are we tactically winning here, anything?
Hmm.
I don't see it.
Probably not, he's just taking on a4 and...
Yeah, this, I, I don't think we, we have quite enough here.
Well, but you could play, you can start with knight e4.
Mm-hmm.
Like, coming into f6, doubling on d3.
No, no, yeah. This is, this is another thing we haven't mentioned at all. That's, that's another outpost for the knight.
Yeah, came up during king safety, I think, but...
Yeah, the weak dark squares. Uh, but this is another big problem that, that, uh... What you gonna call it? Uh, Black has. Yeah, this, this looks pretty rough.
Is this, uh, is this not still possible after a5 in the original position? So just close it? No, no, um...
Oh, playing a...
The original position.
Yeah, playing a5.
White playing a5, and then going for this plan of tripling on the d file.
Absolutely. It's absolutely possible.
I feel like that's a lot less complicated. And I'm generally very lazy.
Haha. Uh, I'm trying to see if Black can do anything at all.
Hmm. You can try, like...
I'm, I would try this, I think.
Yeah, kingside pawn break.
And I'm, my next move is, might be like, f5.
Yeah, but then, so, in that position, you could play knight e4.
Yeah, but here's my idea. If you, or, no, I should play f5. Oh, god, I don't know.
Yep, yep, yep. We found the problem, guys.
No, no, let me play f5.
Okay, and then the knight jumps in and you're threatening to take the bishop.
Oh, you literally are taking the bishop. Um...
Can you just take the pawn then?
No, cause here I have this, that was sort of my point.
Oh, okay.
But, do you have this, though? I take on d4.
Uh, fine. Fine, fine.
Um, the position is just so bad for Black. That's why I was gonna say something like bishop e8, just get uh, clear everything on the d file, but positionally, it's just awful. There's no hope here for Black.
I think...
And then, once the, once the knight's coming into f6, maybe then swing a rook over.
I think the thing about this position is it's so pleasant that most plans will work. Most plans for White will work. Um, a5 and kingside attack is gonna work, triple on the a file is gonna work. Uh, swing the knight into f6, that'll work. Um, White is just so much better that he can sort of do whatever he wants and it'll be pretty good. Alright, chapter 10. Oh, right. Um, so chapter 10 is, uh, a game between two players. Let's find out what players they were, cause I forget. Imagine that, two players. Uh, not that one, not that one either. It was, uh, Nepo Niachi. Uh, Nepo Na, I don't know how to pronounce his name, you know who I'm talking about, Nepo. Uh, Nepo had white and Brinell had black. Uh, and, and Silman did not like Nepo's move here. Uh, here, Nepo played, uh, bishop c1. And, uh, Silman did not agree.
Is that prepping f5?
Uh, yeah, bishop, bishop c1 with the idea of playing f5, trying to win, uh, h6. But let's go back to this original position. Um, and let's take a minute, just, uh, look at the position, sort of evaluate for it, for yourself, and come up with a plan for White. Alright, who's got a plan for me?
Play f5.
Play f5 immediately. That's a plan.
Immediately, but build towards f5.
Oh, with bishop c1?
Uh, absolutely.
Great, bishop, bishop, bishop c1 and f5. It's a plan. It is a plan, absolutely.
It is a plan. I was, I was looking for, like, g4 and f5.
Uh, so, what would you start with? Like, rook f3 maybe?
I need to move the, probably rook e3.
Rook e3, so you don't care.
I don't know. I, I don't think it matters too much where we, but I was just thinking, like, if we don't do anything, Black can produce a position with knight g7, f5.
Great, so g4, f5 is, um, Mr. Determination's plans. Do we have any other plans?
Um, knight c3 to e4, but I, I mean, it improves the knight, but I don't see what it's doing there either. I don't know if it's the best, uh, active, given the, given the theme, I imagine that is the idea, but...
Knight c3, e4, um, and then, you know, maybe at some point, we'll, we'll do a little of that, right? Knight f6, check.
I mean, that does, that does prevent, um, the knight g7 move, or, well, it doesn't prevent it, but it makes it slightly worse for Black.
Discourages it, right?
Yeah.
Um, so that's a plan. Any other plans we came up with?
D4. Both of the positions.
D4?
Why not?
Ju- just for funsies?
Primary, I mean, Black's pieces are very tangled and passive, like, his bishops are quite bad.
Mm-hmm. So, I, I don't, I, I sort of like this move, actually, cause it, it unleashes him as well. Um, so we're taking care of him. Um...
The more I look at it, the more I like it, right? Cause you...
A take and then knight takes?
No, I'm, I'm, do I even have to take back, like? Threaten to take on g6 a million times? Or something like... I feel like there's tactics here. Just unleashing the bishop on the kingside seems quite good.
So, let's, let's handle these one, one at a time. So let's, let's handle these one, one at a time. Rookie three.
Yeah.
Uh, and we're gonna play G four, rar. Okay. Let's, let's save black's life.
Well, does the G seven plan? The knight G seven plan, just like doing anything?
The thing about knight G seven is, I feel like whites, like we played rookie three with the idea of playing G four, right? So after, after this, this. I'm not exactly sure why my knight's on G seven.
Hmm, cuz then F four. H five, of course, no.
You mean F five?
F five, yeah.
Uh, is this a problem?
Oh, I didn't see the bishop.
Yeah, maybe.
So, uh, knight G seven, I just think the knight's a little sad on G seven. I mean, granted, the knight's not thrilled to be on E eight, um. How, how about this?
Still take on F six.
Mm-hmm, but now I have a knight.
But your structure is so good, D four.
E five's coming, E five? For threat on the queen?
Oh, tactics.
F five?
Can I, oh, God, this is a disaster. I don't know what's happening.
White's pieces are just so active to start this, that.
May- maybe I do, maybe I do this?
D takes, D takes E.
Yeah. Isn't.
F five check coming.
G four?
G four, yeah, tactics.
No, I can take on F six.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah, that's sad.
So, okay. Uh, after rookie three, I'm not convinced F five is a terrible move. I think we have to find something after D four here. What happens if I take it? I take it.
Alright, but then, I take back on D four, so the knight takes D four?
Uh, ah, now this is a problem.
You're not threatening to take the knight, right? So.
Oh, balls, you're right. I'm threatening to take the knight, no, not even with that. I was gonna say rook takes knight, still doesn't work. But, uh, what are you, are you gonna play F five again here?
Yeah.
Yeah, you are. Um, but now isn't G six or isn't G five less of a disaster for me?
Now I can, can I just play knight E six?
I thought you might say that.
That knight C six with a fork.
Also that.
Trying to think, like. So you're winning the exchange on. I'm just still trying to open lines towards the king, because unless you want to lose the exchange, you have to take on E six and then F E six would check, the bishop is active.
Yeah, that's, uh, when you play, when you play ninety six, I, I really don't wanna take that.
Yeah, just the, both, uh, both white bishops are just so active.
Yeah, that is horrendous, isn't it?
Cuz here, after, after this, uh, I actually can win a pawn if I want to.
Hmm, I'd prefer an exchange to a pawn, but yeah, this does look pretty bad for the king.
Even if you don't take on A five, like you can. I'm wondering if there's tactics on F six or something, or.
Yeah, it's totally possible. I'm not sure.
Oh, what about, what about queen? Yeah, yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah, oh, wow, that's nice.
And it might force you to do something totally ridiculous.
How about, how about, uh, E, E seven?
Rook takes E five? Oh, E seven.
Rook takes E five.
E seven. Deflection, deflection.
E seven.
I don't know if it works there. Or if you take, cuz it's not mate.
Yeah, you're just getting all of the pawns, but.
Yeah, but, but this.
Oh, oh, then, yeah, go back and then the rook swings over.
Yeah.
Oh, the queen blocks, I suppose.
Well, queen H seven, I have this.
Wait, does that?
Oh, actually, hang on, go back and move. Oh, yeah, yeah, queen eight, queen H seven, you can take with the bishop.
I can, well, I can take this, can I?
You can take the queen with the bishop.
Tactics training the whole time?
Oh, haha.
Yeah, so you have to go to G eight and on G eight you can play. I don't know, take on G five, take on.
Uh, can we agree this is lost for black?
Yeah.
Great, um, so F five is uninspiring. What else can black do?
Rook's pieces, bishop B seven.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this, this looks, this looks like a thing. Okay, we had a plan.
Cry.
Cry, yeah, that's, that's my, that's my favorite response. I mean, okay, are you threatening something?
With G four?
Yeah, do you have a threat?
Play F five? If you just pass, if you play.
Is that a threat?
I hope so.
I play A six.
Alright, um. Yeah, let's go, let's play F five.
Okay.
What do, what are we doing here?
Uh, takes.
Okay, takes. Take it again, take it again.
I won't.
G five?
Yeah, I, I, well, ooh, I don't know.
You could just leave, you could just leave it.
Yeah, I think I, instead of playing G five, I would leave it.
I kind of, I kind of think that D four was good before, because that makes this so much stronger.
G five, F six is a strong counter blow.
G five, F.
D four to follow up later.
Yeah, cuz D, it's gonna be D four.
But then queen, queen D seven. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, let's not play G five.
Uh, so I would, I would just leave it. I might play something like this.
That's the fork there.
I walked into.
I almost wonder if the bishop is better on C eight.
It might be, right? I don't know, it feels, it feels like white's king is a little airy. Oh, hold on, chuck.
I mean.
No, rook, rook blocks, rook blocks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do I have something here? I found a nice little chuck. Okay, let's, let's, you know.
Okay, then bishop C one. Skew a mate threat.
Uh, is that a mate threat? Am I getting mated?
Yeah, because then you've got the check and then you've got F six with.
G seven discovered.
The knight, no, the knight.
No, let me do this.
Okay, so queen takes. Uh, rook takes?
G six? Rook takes G six?
Yeah, does that work?
Alright, mine.
Well, I mean, you've got pawn takes, but then the queen, the queen's checking.
Okay, I have this.
Uh, yes, yeah, this I don't like.
I don't, I don't think rook takes is correct.
F six, yeah, I don't think rook takes is right either.
Oh, guys, 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 there's an easier way for all of this.
Yeah, yeah, so let's go back.
Resign.
Just take on G six here.
With the pawn?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, uh, I. Uh, will do this. Oh, I see your points. I see your points.
I mean, it's sharp.
So king, king G, yeah, well, yeah, either there or.
That's a disaster, that's a disaster. I'm just, oh, God, does everything lose?
I don't think, I don't think the counter attack was working for black.
It's got all those, king G eight, G takes F seven.
Yeah, no, no, this is all disaster. Okay, so my, my, my play for activity was not. Correct. How did we get here? Uh, I'm starting to have too many variations. Okay, it's in the bishop B seven. Queen G five, queen G five, rip G three. Am I getting anywhere with this?
Yeah, you're getting mated.
I don't, I don't know if that's true.
Maybe not places you wanna go, but places.
Important thing is we're moving.
Okay. I'm not getting mated anymore.
Though, though.
Pawn takes.
Uh-huh.
And then the rook hangs.
Oh, my.
Or queen takes first.
My F eight rook, where did that come from?
And then after that, you've also got D four and the pawn is dropping.
Why is my knight on E eight?
Oh, actually, yeah, that's really nice. Yeah, cuz you can, you can almost play D four and take the queen for free.
Okay, uh, con- uh, conclusion of the rookie three lines, I can't refute it.
Alright.
I, I cannot refute it, neither could anyone else. Uh, let's take a look at, um, the knight C three plan we had.
Yay. Gonna do it.
So I think there's two main ideas. Someone mentioned knight G seven, right?
Yeah.
Uh, I had a plan. We can come in on F five, knight F five?
Yeah, I like it.
Are, we're not worried about a little choo?
Is, is, uh, is knight G five checking thing?
Not the way.
No, not really.
Just move.
Yeah, it's still, still bad.
I think you just play king G seven on knight of six as well.
Well, yeah, I think.
H six is covered and. Enough to sacrifice through here, because you, you haven't played D four, the bishops aren't. As active.
Yeah, but I might play it now.
Well, you have to move the rook unless.
I don't think I do.
Really? You can just play D four?
I don't, I don't care that much about that rook. I don't think.
I feel like the knight's doing quite a lot of defensive work.
I could maybe do this even.
Oh.
Or you could, you could let them take, take with the H pawn and then move the king out of the way and swing the rook to H one.
Uh, then I'm a little worried about my.
A little bit slow.
If you're gonna play rook FF three.
I don't think, I don't think this is correct because of bishop B seven. Although, I don't know, do I have some like, lots of sacrifices?
Probably D four just opens all of the lines.
Yeah, let's, let's do, let's do D four. Do you wanna take, do you wanna take on D four or you wanna take the rook?
I want the rook.
You want the rook? You.
I'll at least calculate it.
You would, you greedy man.
Yeah.
Um.
This has gotta be critical, because unless you can bring the other rook, a lot of the lines we were working at don't work the same way.
So now you can bring the rook to H one.
Yeah.
If you play king, king F two.
King F two, let's go.
It's bold, it's bold.
I'll take on D four. I can play rook H eight.
With, with the pawn? Or with the rook?
Oh, yeah, yeah, rook H eight.
The pawn? Okay.
Ready for the spectacular counter blow?
Yeah.
That we've all been waiting for. D three, X slam, blunting the light score bishop. Knights were good blockators, come on.
Yeah, but I'm not letting you play D two.
I mean. Isn't your king super exposed now?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but.
Okay, you know, you know what, uh, this should have been, uh, I, I changed, I lied, I lied. This should have been this.
D two.
D two?
X slam.
F five?
At some point here, just as a preventative. After rook H eight, I don't think you've, I don't see any threats. Your light score bishop is out, your dark score bishop is. Taken care of by the rook.
Let me take this.
Uh, sorry, before, um.
Or no, hold on.
Before F five. Instead of D two, I wanna leave the pawn on D three with the point that it just shuts out your light score bishop.
Totally, I, that's a better move, I think. So you wanna play rook H eight here?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, it's still kind of a pain.
G four?
Improve. Yeah.
Here we go. I think, I think, uh, I, I fa- I highly feel like there's improvements for whites earlier in the line.
Yeah.
After knight E four.
I don't really like this plan, even though I suggested it, cuz I don't see what the knight's doing still. There's no threat.
So knight C three, knight G seven. Can I sack this?
Knight takes?
Try, I think if you're, if you're gonna make this sack, play D four first.
Well, the reason I wanna sack this now is cuz you're threatening to play knight F five.
But like, I don't know, D four, knight F five, you can just take on a five with the bishop.
Oh, so, uh, D four. That's, that's another way to stop knight F five. Okay, yeah, that's equally valid.
Oh, and then, pawn takes hitting the knight.
Yeah, but now, now my, this.
You can't play that because then the knight comes in.
That's fine. Check and I'll take it.
Oh, yeah, you'll take it now. Okay, so king G seven.
Well, but I don't think you can really, I don't think knight F five is super playable here, after knight E four.
Why?
Uh, well, I think you have to, actually. I think you have to.
You take it and then, no, you're getting mated. Bishop takes F five, E takes F five, queen takes H six, and then you have the standard mate.
Say that again?
Uh, takes.
Bishop takes a five, E takes a five, queen takes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and it's a, it's an Arabian.
Yeah, I don't know the names, but yeah, it's a mate.
So, this, this, uh, we've found some venom in this line, no?
We have indeed. Seems like a lot of the venom comes from D four. I wonder if starting with D four is better.
Uh, let's, let's look. Uh, I'll take it, I'll take it.
Now the knight's never getting to C three.
That's true, a lot of the venom of the previous line was the knight landing on F six.
Yeah. I was thinking like F five and bringing the knight in that way, but the bishop is shut out. Yeah, I don't like this as much. Uh, but maybe there's something. There's, there's always something. I want to put, can we put the rook on H three? So could we do like queen G four, rook H three, reshuffle our pieces that way?
At, right here?
After D four, so D four, C D four.
Queen G four?
Yeah.
Now you need rook G eight cuz you're threatening the sack.
I feel like, I feel like you're giving me, you're giving me an awful lot of time.
Just pass, I'm taking on G six, the sack works there.
Does it?
Should.
Take, take, and then, yeah. But then the queen can come in. Wait, play A, play A six then?
Mm-hmm.
And then bishop takes, yeah, queen takes.
F eight is hanging, so you take on H six, queen H seven, force, queen takes a fate.
Ah, yeah, classic.
So, uh, we're not gonna play A six here.
Um, yeah, so rook G eight is, or any defender of G six.
We can play rook G eight, I just wanna see if there's anything else we can do.
D three again is an option.
D, D three is very interesting, actually.
D three, bishop takes D three, cuz it's backed up by the rook.
But then you're always, you're threatening to.
No, cuz then you sack immediately after, and if you defend, then you just pull the bishop back and you've lost a pawn.
Okay.
So let's, let's try rook G eight, that's a move.
Right point, uh.
Rook H three, that was your plan, right?
Yeah, I'm wondering now if it's so good.
I just, I'm not sure what you're accomplishing with this shuffling.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, but it's.
Does A?
H four?
Does H four work? H four, H five?
It, it's something, can, can I play H five? Just say no?
No, queen takes.
Queen takes H five?
Yeah, that, that pawn's pinned.
Yep. Tactics one O one. Great.
Okay, so if we pass again, then H five.
Let me, let me play this, I think this is good.
Okay. Oh, but then the sack works again. Because you've obstructed the rook.
Uh, yeah.
So, yeah, bishop takes, pawn takes, queen takes, king H eight, queen takes mate, queen takes H six mate.
Fine. Um.
Hold on, hold, hold on. Uh, knight G seven, H five, uh, sorry, bishop takes G six, you don't have to take it, you can step back to H eight. As stupid as it looks, like white's pieces, the H pawn is actually in the way.
Ah, true.
And. D file is a problem for white.
Yeah.
Yeah, now do I have, mm, well, no, okay. No, maybe, maybe I do have this.
Yeah, that doesn't look grateful.
Queen H five, you're giving away a square.
I'm giving away.
Oh, and then you can't take because of the mate. Oh, you could take with the rook.
Yeah, can I do this? Yeah, can I do this?
Uh.
Bishop takes.
F5?
Bishop takes f5?
Yeah. Or even knight takes actually, but, ni- as in knight takes rook.
Yeah, but I think, I feel like this might be stronger, actually.
Yeah.
This is, this is trouble.
So pawn takes.
I do, yeah, I guess, I don't know, I'm probably.
Take on h6.
Yeah, this, this is lost.
For, for white?
No, for.
For black.
For black.
Knight takes g3 on the end.
And black, black is a disaster.
Yeah, knight h5 coming.
So, okay.
Yeah, I'd probably still manage to lose it, but yeah.
I, I think, I think knight g7 is a ridiculous move, why, why are we giving white even the opportunity?
Yeah, so.
Let's play something else. You're, you're about to play h5, that's a thing.
What else to do, though?
Yeah.
I don't know, could we play something active, d3?
F5, F5.
Bishop takes, yeah.
F5? Is not so ridiculous. Okay, takes. Queen takes?
Queen takes, yeah. And then, there's, that's the thing I was gonna say, yeah. Okay, what about h5 now?
E5?
Bishop takes. Hmm.
King h8?
Queen somewhere, run.
Or queen where, there's not many squares.
Well, you can go to f3.
Guys, what happens if you take on g6 with the pawn? Because then you've, king g7.
Here in this position?
Yeah.
Sorry, when, I'll take here.
Five, e5, takes, why can't I play king h8?
You can, but I have the h5 square now.
And you also have g7 check, which is potentially annoying.
And you could just play.
What's, what's wrong with this?
Uh, you could, you could just play f, uh, f5. Which blunts the side.
Still play queen h5, but I can also play f5.
Yeah, but now, all of a sudden, I feel like my position has amounted to something as black.
Uh, rook h3, do you still feel that way?
For now.
I need four.
Oh, I was gonna play d3, but then I would be sad.
Yeah, that's not, not the best.
Suddenly the pawn stopped moving and.
Yeah, okay, but then.
Hold on, are you getting mated?
Certainly possible.
I guess I have to calculate. Take on g5, rook h7. King f6. I don't know the best way to take, I wanna open up the darks for diagonal, but I don't want to let you give the exchange away, so I have to take with the knight, I guess.
What about, is, is rook, is rook f7 first, now then the king's coming in and defending, yeah?
Yeah, thi- this, this looks ridiculous.
Yeah, I mean, you can't take, can you?
Well, can I, can I do like this?
Hmm.
And then, then rook, uh, rook f7 is mate.
Yeah.
Okay. So. This is a disaster.
Yeah.
I don't know, h5, we don't have to play e5.
Let's see, there's gotta be some other way to get activity, um. E5, with a discovery, maybe?
We, we tried e5, that was the move we had here.
No, no, I'm sorry, after, um, I went all the way back to, um.
After h4?
Yeah, queen c5.
It's a move.
Just centralized pieces somehow, I think.
Okay, and then, what about, what about? Bishop, I don't know, nah, it's with check, never mind.
Hmm, well, uh, still, on this, don't I, uh, just kidding.
Do you not have king h1?
No, I do have king h1, that's why I'm not so convinced by this move.
Hmm.
And then the, the d3 idea is just met at the same as before, with bishop takes.
Now, can I play f5?
You can.
Knight takes, I guess.
Yeah. I'll give you g6, but then you don't have any squares on the king side, so.
Oh, so, so where are you going, h8?
Then your queen has to move, there's issues with the pin, maybe my pieces are.
Yeah, this is not so ridiculous.
Not so stupid. I mean, black's king looks terrible, but as long as the pawn is on d4, maybe it's okay.
This is the most playable I've, thing I've seen from the black side. The least mated I've been this entire time.
Right. Uh, e5?
Yeah.
Can I play e5, is e5 stupid, then I don't have 6, might be real dumb, I don't know.
E5, do I take it?
Think you have to, but bishop takes, and now.
Oh, you do protect that, huh? This is something.
Good, kind of.
I'm alive. I don't need a witness to know that I survived. Uh, yeah, th- this is something, but there might have been improvements for white along the way, in fact, there probably were, uh. But, we've lived, this was in the 1d4 line. So, the line uh, w- we couldn't refute 1e3, and we, we failed to refute 1 knight c3.
He cut out.
Um, I'm saying, we failed to refute 1e3. And we also failed to refute 1 knight c3. 1d4, we made, we made something of black's position. We, we made something of black's position. Uh, I will say, uh, Silman recommends 1 knight c3 with the plan of coming to e4 and murdering you. Which is.
Yeah, but does the knight just not exchange off for it?
Um, well.
I know, I know we looked at it, but I mean, just that plan on its own.
Well, I mean, if the knight stays on e8, our knight won't come in and, and murder you immediately. But if your knight doesn't move off of e8, my knight will sit here, and then maybe I'll do bishop c1 f5.
Yeah.
Um, and then you're really in trouble, because I've, I've improved my knight and I can do this. Also, um, just something to mention, Silman gives this line of taking the knight. But now my f5 break got stronger.
Hmm.
Um, so that's another, another thing to be aware of, uh, I'm interested, I'm just gonna turn on the engine really quickly and see, see what it has to say here. Oh, did I turn off the computer? I did, let me turn it back on.
Good life choices.
Um, oh god, there's so many arrows, uh, the engine really likes rookie 3 here.
Huh. Determination is computer confirmed.
I wonder how it feels about, can you evaluate, uh, rook f3 versus rookie e3?
Rook f3 is.
Is it just worse because of bishop b7?
Slightly worse because of bishop b7, yeah, and after bishop b7, it wants to go rookie 3.
That's hilarious.
Um, let's see what it thinks about 1d4. That's 2d4, 1d4, um. It's decided it's better than rookie 3.
Really?
Yep, it really likes 1d4 now.
Open that position.
Uh, and 1 knight c3 is also better than rookie 3, oh, maybe not, well, let's give it time.
Yeah, what depth is this going to, because we went to like, 10?
This is going to depth 22.
Yeah, so that's ply, so yeah, about the same.
Yeah.
It's just slightly further than we are.
Um.
In some lens, I don't know, some lens, we just calculate it.
I can see a 12.
It's evalu- it's evaluating most of these options about the same, uh, with a, with a small but significant advantage to white.
Um, yeah, what is that, like?
Plus, plus 0.7, plus 0.7.
0.7, okay.
Uh.
Not all.
What?
I said, is that all, wow, I guess computers just defend that much better.
Yeah, that's the thing, we, we suck at defending. Like here, after rookie 3, the, the computer wants to play rook h8, good luck finding that move in the game, in a real game. Um, so that's, uh. It, computer's giving knight c3, but sure, d4, d4, it really doesn't like, it just goes like this.
Wow.
And it's saying black is fine.
Fine, wow.
Plus point, plus 0.3, you've thrown away that advantage, man. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe it, but.
This is a different position, this is with the rook already on e3.
Yeah, I was saying after rookie 3, what were you, oh, you were saying 1d4? We can do 1d4. Yeah, 1d4, it likes a lot, it thinks it's good.
What does it say about, uh, bishop c1, one bishop c1?
Uh.
Which is what Nepo played, right?
Yeah, uh, plus 0.3, it doesn't like this move.
Nepo.
I know, right, what a, what a, what a patsir. Alright, we've, we've.
Favorite part about.
Sorry, go ahead.
C1, favorite part about bishop c1 is you can just play bishop b2 next move.
Uh, what, what do you mean?
Uh, so you can, you can just go back, like you can admit bishop c1 was a mistake.
Well, what, what do you think black is gonna play here?
Uh, it's a great question, um. Is rook h8 bad here?
Rook h8 is the, the computer recommended best move in this position.
I was like, if it, if it thought it was good in the other position, this one's not so much different.
Oh, hey, hey, guess what the computer's recommending here, this is unreal.
B1, bt?
No.
Bt? Draw.
How about this one?
Uh, what? Okay, so takes d4 check, I guess.
Yeah.
D4 mate.
Or f5 e6.
F5, oh, right, wow.
I hate computers.
Anyway, we've, we've beaten that horse into the ground, uh, chapter 11 just gives, uh, the game continuation that Selman gives. Uh, it's the same position with the, with the continuation that, that Selman gives after knight c3.
What a guy, Selman.
He, he's a big, he's a big fan of getting his, his pieces to, to, you know, real squares.
Hey, so am I, but.
But you also like mating, I understand, let me turn this computer off.
Phrasing.
Yeah, you. Damn it, so, um. In chapter 12, we have another game, uh, this is Topolov Ivanchuk, so you know, some pretty good players. Let's take a moment to evaluate this position, who's better? Or is anyone better?
Hmm. We need to support my evaluation, or?
Just, just guess, any evaluation? Um, hopefully, hopefully you can back up your evaluation with some imbalances. As that is our, our Silman approved method.
Gonna give, I'm not gonna give an evaluation, I'm just gonna describe the position.
Please do.
So, black has good pawn structure on the king side, but pretty bad on the queen side.
So that's clearly an imbalance, the, the structure for black is, is worse here.
Um, bishop versus knight, obviously, um, hmm, and then the things that annoy me about both sides is the hanging pawns, so uh, well, black's got the battery on the c file, which could become open, um. And, I don't know if white's gonna play something like rook c1, um, or maybe bishop uh, d3, but then the pawn on b5 is also hanging, I don't know, it's just, it seems quite messy, I don't like the knight, black's knight.
Black, black's knight doesn't look like it's, it's doing so hot here, right?
Yeah.
So.
But yeah, I don't know who's better.
Uh, this would probably be a, a priority for black, um, some things that we didn't mention, this is a backwards pawn. This is a textbook backward, backwards pawn, uh, so white's structure is not incredible here. Um, white's king is in the center. So white's, I think white's king's safety is actually significantly worse here.
Who's move is it, black?
It's black to move, um, so, uh, white's king is unsafe. Uh, I think we hit mostly on everything else, um, black has some nice pressure along the c file. Uh, there's this imbalance of bishop versus knight, we, we said the, the knight on b6 isn't thrilled to be where it is. And black, of course, has some disturbed pawns, including the b5 pawn, which is currently hanging.
Can we also just quickly brush over the fact that a3 is weak?
Yeah, a3.
As long as we have the pawn on b5.
A3 is weak because the push a4 can never happen, uh, in fact a3, I believe is a textbook backwards pawn, currently. It's currently backwards.
I'll take your word for it, but, uh.
I, I think, um. I think it's, it's currently backwards because it can't be supported by another pawn, unless you could break it. Which you can't, um, and it's on an open file, uh, so white actually has two backwards pawns. There's also a pin along the a file, isn't that annoying, well, not really, but there's a queen defending.
Is there anything to say about the immediate queen, queen trade force?
We, so that's, that's something that black can consider, black can, can force the queens off if he wants.
So I've been looking at that, and then, maybe king in to defend, and
Mm-hmm.
Like trying to get the knight active, so maybe d4 and knight d5.
So.
And just not caring about the b5 pawn.
So there's this idea, uh, one plan, one possible plan for black is to trade queens. Are there any other possible plans for black?
Reroute the knights.
The knight's a bad piece, right, so we would wanna fix it, how would we reroute the knight?
Uh, d7, c5, and then e4, that's a nice square.
Yeah, so.
And then bishop can trade, yeah, yeah.
Improving the knight is a possible plan. If we improve the knight, uh, are we hanging b5?
Queen a5.
Uh, queen a5, also c2's hanging. So, we could trade pawns, or we could play queen a5. So, um, let's take a look, let's take a look at the queen trade, because that was the first thing I heard suggested, queen c3. Well, uh. White is not forced to take that.
No, queen d, d2.
Uh, but after queen d2.
Yeah, you are, a1 hangs.
A1 hangs.
Come on, guess.
Guys, I'm really good at chess, I don't know what to tell you.
I just, I just believe you when you say that they don't have to trade, so I'm like, okay, there must be another mate.
Well.
Doing this on straight, doing this while recording is so hard.
I've, I've fully accepted that I'm gonna have no chess, uh, like, acumen after this.
This has nothing to do with me recording, this is just how I function in chess in life. I'm just terrible at chess, I don't know what to tell you, um. And, uh, let's, let's look here, what would you play as white? I might, I'm looking at king d2.
Yeah, because otherwise you drop the a3 pawn, um, well, you could play like bishop d3, but.
I think, I think king d2 makes a lot of sense, and you know, I don't know, rook a c8 for black.
Yeah, and then that stops attacking a3, so then, either rook to c1.
I think this is all of a sudden gone a little bit wrong for black.
I would should put that rook there, you should play bishop d3 and play on king side.
Bishop d3 as well.
Yeah, I think so, because the, the knight is terrible, you can play g4 and f5.
The thing, after, after this rook, my, my question to you is how, what are you doing about your b5 pawn?
Uh, rook five.
Rook what?
Yeah, and then, and then b4.
Sorry, what was the move, rook, rook what?
Rook c5, with an i and b4.
Which rook?
Uh, on c3.
It has to be, yeah, it has to be the c3 rook.
Uh, and is this an issue?[1762.87]
Yeah.
C three, I thought, let's see, no, knight, sorry, knight C four in between.
Knight C four check.
Uh, that's nice.
And, yeah, this is the problem of ever advancing the B three pawn is the knight on B six suddenly gets squares.
Yeah. Um, okay, but I don't have to play B four.
Right. Yeah, there's other ways to build the position, but.
Well, but if I don't play B four, then me playing rook on H to C one is a little ridiculous.
Right.
But okay, I can also, I can do, uh. Uh, the, the, this rook, him. And I'd still like to ask you what you're doing about your, your B five pawn. And you're still, you're still gonna say this, I assume.
Uh. But there's also like, I, if I play, this was mentioned earlier and I really like it, but if I play D four. Knight D five comes with tempo, ninety three is suddenly hitting on C two.
But D four in this position?
You know, yeah, and just trading.
I, I apologize, I actually, I did not hear that, this suggestion.
Gotcha. Yeah, this is, uh, I don't know if it's any good, but it's interesting.
I'm a little worried about this idea, uh. Sort of ruining your coordination.
The rook is defended.
I, I know the rook is defended, um.
You're gonna give me my pawn back though?
Well, I, I, maybe not in this position, like, like, what if I do this?
Now ninety three.
Ninety three.
No, ninety three.
Yeah, but. But I can do this. Oh, you, you hit that square, huh?
Knight takes.
Uh, yeah. The knight on E three.
You can go back to D three.
I can. I don't want to, but I can. But you know, hey, I got, I got a pawn, I got a pawn.
It's, it's a pawn for activity.
And on knight is a beast now.
Right. So.
Yeah, this position might be, I, I might evaluate this as close to equal. I think black's activity does compensate him for the pawn.
But there is also rook, uh, C three to C five, if they wanna play that way as well. I don't, I'm not convinced that's. Losing, certainly worse.
Uh, yeah, rook three to C five. Um, this is again something.
Sorry, in the AC one line, but.
Oh, yeah, I, I meant to go to the AC one line as well, actually. Uh, so thank you, uh, rook three, C five. Yeah, and, and this is absolutely playable. Um, this looks pretty equal to me. I don't really see how either side's gonna make a ton of progress. Maybe black might be slightly worse with, with these long-term targets.
After, so determination's plan of attacking on the king side, so after like bishop D three.
Mm-hmm.
Can you then just? Like advance the H pawns, cause some trouble there, what's black threatening?
Uh, well, here, after bishop D three, uh, I can start to do a little bit of. Shenangas with my knight because you haven't just protected your, your C two pawn with a piece that's not a bishop.
Yeah.
I see. Yeah, so probably now rook A C one.
Mm-hmm. Um.
But at least my other rook is free.
And, well, I don't know. What am I doing with my life?
I was gonna suggest a knight C five, no, 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 that hangs there. Yeah, that's what, that's what I was saying, not. I just, I just come through that.
Maybe after bishop D three, I go for a similar variation like this. And I'll, I'll go for a similar idea of jumping my, my knight in, my mighty knight.
Can I play? D five is too good, um, can I play F five right away? No.
You can, you're welcome to.
I mean.
I'll, I'll, I'll ignore you.
Yeah, the thing I don't like about this is that white's carrying on attacking, but their rooks are terrible.
Yeah, it's like you're attacking with just your pawns, I feel like.
But yeah, I want to open the files for the rooks, but. I don't know where the rooks belong yet.
That's.
And so I don't want to put them on bad squares, but. At the same time, yeah.
Because here, here you can't, oh, actually, I was gonna say you can't take back with the bishop. I forgot they defend backwards as well.
But yeah, I think, um, in all these positions, they seem roughly equal to me. Uh, cuz like here, yeah, black has a couple of static weaknesses, but, uh, we see that black also. Can come alive with a lot of dynamic play, uh, especially with this D four move.
One thing in that line we were just looking at.
Hmm, after F five?
Yeah.
Uh, where in God's name is that? No, that's not that, okay, F five, yeah, ninety five.
Yeah, so you can take on E, you can take the pawn with E, E takes F. Cuz if bishop takes back. Oh no, so knight, oh, we were playing knight instead, okay, I got confused. I was thinking the knight was on D five cuz then we can play knight E three.
Gotcha.
But no.
Oh, yeah, and that would be a, a, a really a lot of things being, well, but even if we had ninety three, this rook would be hanging, no?
Uh, yeah, good point.
We're, we're all so sharp today on our tactics. Especially me, I've been really good at them. But here, I, I would say black gets, gets a lot of dynamic counterplay for his structural weakness. Agree?
Yeah.
Um, however, queen C three is not the move that, uh, Selman. Or sorry, that Selman recommends or that Ivanchuk played in this position.
Yep, is it knight to seven?
Uh, Ivanchuk played knight D seven.
Yeah.
And Ivanchuk.
Going for the thematic one.
Uh, Ivanchuk is, says, yo, my knight sucks, let's make my knight amazing. Um, and there's two moves really to consider for white. What, what, what are two moves that white can consider?
Please don't, I don't know, the one that loses the bishop has to be considered, I guess, right? But.
Uh, well, this, this is not even mentioned in the book, although here. No, I lose a rook.
Yeah, yeah, that's pinned.
Um, and here.
Two rooks even.
I still lose the bishop, just kidding. Um, two rooks, yeah. So, um, we're not gonna throw our bishop away. What, uh, what is, what is white have to consider here?
Uh, knight jump in, so you could play B four, I guess.
Uh, you're losing a pawn.
Oh, yeah, I'm so sharp.
Uh, rook C one loses a pawn.
Yeah.
Oh, the other side, yeah, so bishop D three.
Bishop D three must be considered, uh, okay. What else?
Queen defend, no, that's bad, never mind, um.
How else can I defend my pawn?
C four.
I could, I could play C four.
That goes so very well for white.
It feels, it feels adventurous.
In the center, open up lines.
Um, so this is a weird move, uh, rook A two.
Ah.
And this is actually the main line. Uh, and this is what Topolov played. Topolov played rook A two. Let's see why he chose not to play bishop D three. What's sort of the obvious move after bishop D three?
Knight C five.
Knight C five. Um. I don't think you can let black take.
Yeah, that battery.
That's interesting.
Hmm, yeah, because then, no, cuz then, yeah, you take and then you can trade queens and you get the open file.
Yeah, and I, my, my rook ends up here.
Yeah.
Which is disastrous. I don't know, can white castle here? Oh my god.
No.
You turned castling off.
I don't have castling available.
Uh, one day we'll learn.
Um. We're just, we're just gonna say white can't castle cuz I can't analyze it.
Now we're practicing in our heads, say white castles.
White castles, knight takes.
C takes, queen C three, queen C three, rook C three.
Well, what, why can't we, oh.
It, it doesn't force the trade anymore, does it?
No, it doesn't. After, after.
So what else?
Yeah, it's.
You're gonna play queen E three or something?
Yeah, then you're losing B three.
Well, oh, actually, you can still force the trade because the, the king will be on G one, so you can play queen C five.
Well, then there would be D four.
Uh.
Cuz C, C D was played, C D three was.
Yeah, but the queen is on D, the queen is on D four.
Oh, you're saying C D three, immediate queen C five.
Yeah.
I think that's a, that's a little bit less potent because the rook doesn't end up on C three.
Yeah, I'm in time to oppose rooks on the C file.
But you can only oppose one rook.
You still get control of the file.
Hmm, yeah, but.
Black might actually be.
So if we trade everything on C five, I.
You can only trade one pair of rooks.
Rook is on C five. Uh, like, yes, black is better, but if. It's a game of buy how much at that point, like, I can play, can I play A four on the end and like?
And rook B one.
Open up a file for my pieces. Yeah, so you used to play B four and then.
That crank. Yeah.
So that's likely.
Yeah, it's definitely not as good, yeah.
But, um, I think if you let, if you let him take and you play queen C three there, it gets pretty rough. Uh, cuz if the queen has to step back, I can at least take on B three. If you take me, my rook comes into C three, that's really unpleasant. Um.
White should play F five at some point there.
Uh, a- after the queen steps back?
Yeah, so if, if we go queen E three, queen takes B three, F five. I'm just trying, I'm trying to find active play before the black rooks come in. I don't think it's so good, but.
Play, uh, E, EF five, yeah. And I'm threat, I'm threatening A three.
Meet you, come on.
What, what, sorry, what'd you say?
Uh, so probably take on F five and just, if you want A three, go for A three, but.
Well, you can't take on F five, you play queen E three.
Uh, take a, take with a rook, I castle.
Oh, you did castle. I forgot about that. Um, yeah, that's true. It, I think, uh, at this point. The, it becomes less helpful to study this because we can't have it on the board.
Yeah.
Um, and it's hard to sort of agree on variations. Um, I think the, the. The critical move here is bishop B two, just saying, okay. Uh, oh, they give, um, he gives a, he gives a mention, castles, knight takes D three, C takes D three, queen C three. Leaves white with the impossible task of having to defend the pawns on D three, B three and A three. There you go, determination, it's impossible.
It's impossible, so you let some of them go and you play for activity.
Well, uh, I, I, I don't know, Ja- Jeremy Selman has told me that it's impossible.
It's impossible, you're right. And he's, I am, and I'm just a lowly person on the internet.
I know, what, what could you possibly know? Uh, after bishop B two, we have to figure out what, what black's doing cuz, uh, we've, we've cut communication here, right? We're no, we don't have that threat anymore.
Hmm, if only there was a central square that we could. Use to manage it some way.
Okay.
Repeat, draw.
Repeat, draw.
Can I take the endgame now?
I will with queen, oh.
Yeah, there's no king D two.
Queen trade.
Queen C three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, uh, are you gonna play rook in or knight in?
Yeah, rook. You can take on E four, it's fine.
Yeah, I, I. I, I just.
Is it fine? Is it fine?
I'll take that.
Cuz now you get, now you've got the other file.
Take on E four.
Um.
I can double and then I have E three check as well in some positions. Sick.
Well, let me do something.
Yeah.
A little crazy.
A little crazy, gosh.
Yeah, but then you can double.
Yeah.
Oh, and then the king, king D two, cuz now you do have it.
Here, I would want to castle.
Oh, actually, yeah, you can't play king D two cuz of E three check.
I would want to castle. I can't.
If you play castle, I'm not gonna take on C two, now your king is out of the center, I'll play rook D eight, and you don't even get the open file.
Okay, so, uh, hold on, that means here I want a castle.
Okay.
Then we do take the rook.
Yeah, then we just get.
Then we do take the pawn.
That's okay.
Is it? Is it really?
Our pawn, our pawn structure is pretty terrible as black.
I think it might be, it might be drawn after castles here.
I, it's a long way from that evaluation to a half point.
I think, I think your pawn is, is not that meaningful here.
Okay, so takes, castles.
I can't castle on the board, I'm so sorry.
I know, it's fine, um.
Like, just for intellectual curiosity, do you wanna set up a, um?
Another one? Yeah, I can.
Yeah.
I'm actually gonna have to go.
Okay.
Uh, but thanks for the session.
It's past midnight where I am, so I can.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for joining.
Yeah.
No problem, that's fine. Uh, is this, is this on the same day every week?
Yeah, we usually do it on Saturdays. This has only been the second time ever. Um, and I usually post in Slack cuz last week I was, I was lazy and busy and didn't get it together. Um, but I'll, I'll make sure to post on Slack if we're, if we're doing it, uh, on a Saturday.
Sorry, voice cut there.
Uh, sorry, uh, I said I'll make sure to post on Slack every time we, uh, we set it up.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. It was a pleasure to have you. I hope you learned something.
Sure, sure, I did, I definitely did it. Thank you.
Uh, yes, let me set up this with castles. Guys, this was so easy, why didn't I do this earlier? It's chapter thirty two, it's right at the end. Um, castles, you want to take on C two?
I do, very much.
Congrats, you're the proud owner of a C two pawn.
Thanks.
Let's do that.
Uh. Now I have to actually think, this is mean. I don't wanna have to think.
Hey, I, I, I took a, I took a page out of Determination's book, I played for activity.
Uh, I think I wanna keep. Cuz I think your king is weaker than mine is. Um, also my rooks are starting more active, so. Uh, let's go rook B two.
Yeah.
Okay. X, H five, G six.
Take on B three, one?
Uh, I just wanna activate my other rook.
Oh, what, what'd you say? I didn't hear you move, I'm sorry.
G six?
G six, okay.
I don't know if it's better than H six or anything, but now I can actually take on.
G six is better because I was gonna play F five.
Uh, yeah, okay.
Um, but.
Interesting.
Okay.
Think that may. Backfire for you, I'm not sure. But let's go, make a note of that and let's go back and look at it later. Uh, now I can take on A three. If you play rook D one.
Oh, cuz you, you have made threats.
I do.
Okay, so, I'm not taking.
It's the problem with these double rook in games, uh, take on A three.
Take on A three, I'll take this.
Uh, rook A to A two?
You would. Yeah, yeah, that, that's bad. So I've done, I've done something horribly wrong. Um.
Starting position may be roughly equal, but.
Yeah, I, I definitely went wrong. Um. You know what? I, um. You don't get to play G six, you don't, you don't get to.
Ooh, spicy, okay, um.
Spicy.
Absolutely. And. At some point, you're gonna have to show me that you have a threat, uh. Take on F five.
Great.
G six with tempo.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hmm. Take on A three, I don't know, that's the best. Cuz I can also push E three, which is really interesting there. Your cast to make a choice.
E three?
Yeah.
I was gonna play rook C seven.
Hmm, okay, but.
Oh, you're in time.
Yeah, there's also, there's still the made threat, like I can take on A three.
Yeah.
And then you have to.
No, you're right.
I can give you F seven and then.
Mm-hmm, no, you're, you're, you're right. Uh, rook takes A three.
Just. Might be inaccurate, I'm not sure. Yeah, rook A to A two. You wanna trade a bunch of rooks? Please trade a bunch of rooks.
Yes, actually.
I. Take F two?
Yeah. Oh, you, you've rook A one.
Check on A one, yeah.
And I don't win, I don't win E four at the end of that line. Okay, okay.
Right.
Uh, this is all going wrong. I've done, I've done something terrible. Let me, let me look at this starting position. Um. Is, okay, so is just me defending, is that so bad? Is, okay, so is just me defending, is that so bad?
What do you mean by just defending? Like?
Like.
Okay, two or something, or, it's just passive. White just doesn't have a, he's so far behind in development in the initial position. That by trading off the active pieces, we end up in this position where. Black's rooks are active and White's aren't, and so.
I have an idea. Castles takes, can I do this?
But now, this was what I was thinking of when you were saying it was drawn. Um, because maybe you're able to trade everything on the queen side and suffer in a pawn down single rook end game. But I think this is one of the ones that is very difficult to play. So, take, right? Maybe I don't have to take for sure, but let's look at taking first. Um. And I should probably make a luft for my king at some point. Take care of, okay, so my rooks are active.
Yes.
What's your next, what's, what's your next move?
Move is rook AA one. Rook FA one, excuse me.
Oh, that's right, okay. D eight?
So, rook D eight?
Yeah.
Legal.
My rooks are still better.
Totally legal.
There's no, I was thinking, sorry, I was thinking you would retake with the pawn on A four. Um.
Um, no, I mean, I'm, I'm welcome to the suggestion that that might be a better move.
Yeah, I just thought this was. Uh, we have the same problem, we're like, anytime you want to activate your second rook, ooh. Ooh.
Oh, spicy.
Let's make a luft, uh, is G six the best way? Probably, no. No, let's play H six, let's play H six. I may need to break.
Whoa, wha- what about H five?
I may need to break your structure later on by playing H six and G five.
Yeah, uh.
Here another weakness.
There we go. Um.
Yeah, and here.
I need rooks off, I need a pair off.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take, you'll take, I'll play King H seven.
And I'll play this one.
E three.
You've rook F two.
Rook F two check.
Yeah.
I do.
Okay, so, okay, okay, okay.
Wondered far from home.
God, god!
End games are hard, man.
I know, let me.
Even if they're drawn, it's.
Let me do this one, let me do this one.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
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 Oh, man, um.
Prove the win.
Prove the win.
You must definitively prove the win.
Do I have to? Uh. Let me just play E three again.
E three? Yeah, this was my idea.
E, no, rook C one. This was not the idea you were looking for.
These are not the droids you're looking for. Um, my idea was rook D one, obviously.
Yeah, of course, uh. B two and King G six, but King G six looks like more fun, so let's go protect my pawn.
King G six?
Yeah, I'm just gonna go King F five, King E four. And F four if I'm allowed. Uh, can I push to E two because the king and pawn in games are winning? Maybe.
Uh, are they?
I hope so.
I don't believe you.
King F five? You don't believe me? I have G five. This was the reason H six was so important earlier.
Give me a moment. G, so G three, you're gonna play G five immediately?
Hmm, I assume so, yeah.
What about King E four? That, that was my initial instinct.
King E four? What's the point? That I have, I guess I can run to the B pawn there or something?
Well, you're also shouldering the living daylights out of my king.
Yeah, but like.
Okay, but you.
On G five, interesting weakness.
Well, G, on G five, you're winning a pawn unless I take it, but then you're winning a pawn.
Yeah, but maybe you get the outside.
But I get an outside pass pawn.
Yeah, so takes, takes, takes with pawn.
You're taking with a pawn? Okay, let's do this.
Uh, and then, yeah, let's go to the king and pawn.
You're taking this pawn?
See, but I don't have to, I can play G four.
I know, no you don't.
G four is nice, but I think I can also take on E five. G four wins for sure, though.
Yeah, I agree with that. No, no, I can't, that's so dumb. I should play this right away.
But then I, okay, take on H four? King F four.
Yeah, yeah. It's connected pass pawns, I can't, I can't track them. Okay, yeah, king and pawn is one. So, uh, how did we arrive at this position? Uh, I'm just looking for earlier improvements. What, what chapter were we on? Chapter twelve?
I think so, yep.
So we were looking at, uh. We were looking at, after Knight D seven, let's promote that. Not taking the pawn. Uh, we're gonna play, after Knight D seven, we're gonna play.
I think it was Bishop D three.
Bishop D three, we were, we were looking at this, uh. Bishop D three, um, Knight C five, Bishop B two, and then you went in on Knight E four.
Yep.
I said Bishop back to D three. Not forced.
Not at all.
We can, we can do our, our little rookie two switcheroo again.
I, but my, my threat is the same in all of these lines. If we trade queens, you're gonna have passive rooks. Whoa, man, sorry.
There you go, takes, rook takes. What if? I start with ca- fuck!
Oh, before, uh.
I just wanna start with castling. Uh, I don't wanna make another study, I'll make another study, it's fine. It's fine.
So if you, if you start with castles, maybe then I play Knight C five, cause my rook is already in on C three.
Yeah, give me a second, white castles, both, what, can I castle Queenside?
Hmm, that's interesting. No, cause A three.
I lose A three.
Oh, but wait, King B, okay, the rook on, no, hold on. Maybe King B two forks the rooks. Oh, but then there's B five, or B four, okay.
I probably don't wanna castle Queenside anyway. Uh, chapter thirty-three, I'm castling.
Alright, um. So then probably Knight C five.
Yes.
Wins the pawn, or, or at least forces the extreme, gives me, gives me the C two pawn. Way I'll put that. The C file, and then.
I'll take this.
Yeah, take on C two.
I do this.
Take on C one and then take on B three?
Yeah, I'm okay with this though, as, as white, this is. Equal?
What? Pawn downs?
Oh, I, I am. I miscounted this, yeah, you're right. Okay, so, that's a cool idea with castles Knight C five, so, let's go back to chapter twelve, cause castling isn't working.
Rule of thumb is the knight belongs on E four as long as the king is in the center and then should go to C five.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, once you're out of the center, so.
So, let me do m- my ridiculousness.
Uh, yeah, okay, um. Probably time for me to play B four. Spending the cards a while, but. At least insert this and then. Uh, is Knight C five? May, no, B five you can take on E four and then.
Well, I can take, take B five with a bishop as well.
Hmm. Yeah, but then. I don't know, probably there's competition in the center with. I don't know. I feel like you still have weaknesses if you take with the bishops.
What do you wanna play here? Knight? What'd you, what'd you?
I'm looking at Knight C five. Now that my rook on C three. Yeah, rook on C three is protected, so maybe now I can bring the knight back there.
I can do this.
Hmm.
Oh, no, I lose a pawn. I lose a pawn.
So you'd have to play like rook.
I'd have to cry. I must cry, crying is a must.
Cry, yep.
Knight E four. Where's my improvement? What am I doing? Can I do?
It's just.
The old rookie two here?
Hmm. Knight C three?
Let's repeat? No, you take, you take the bishop, that's ridiculous. Um, okay, that doesn't work. Uh. Uh, white, white, white.
It's just very good position for Black.
No, I know, but I, uh. Okay, I think Bishop D three.
Do you feel like there should be something?
No, I don't feel like so there's something, there should be something for white. I think this is the critical test of this move here. Um, and get like, taking it at some point. I don't know when I'm gonna take it. Maybe right now, maybe I just take it right now.
Okay.
And.
Play King D two or something?
King D two immediately?
Rook A C eight.
Rook A C eight, and then let me do.
Maybe it should be on D one, because E three is coming with tempo now?
Yeah, but that's, uh, King D one, is that really my move?
Right, yeah, exactly.
Uh, ba- 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 ma- ma- mia. D E four. D E four. King D one. Rook here. Rook here. This is actually maybe something that white can deal with.
H six.
Yeah, this is my idea.
E three.
But now I have. Uh, I don't.
And your king is better placed than some of the other variations.
I can do this, maybe.
Hmm, maybe, take, take on C two a million times.
Take G two?
I don't know that that's, I think you should play King F three, because if you give me the G pawn, your structure is bad.
Oh, I never even considered that. But then. You can force a king and pawn, but I don't think it's good for you.
Can I?
With E two, I sort of should take that.
Hmm. Yeah, you don't, I mean, you don't have to, you can just wait. You can play.
Yeah, but then.
Take it. Yeah, I think that king and pawn is fine for you, cause your king is.
Yeah, I agree with that. So I don't, I think E two is not in your best interest.
So, uh, and then I, I also can't play like rook C three or whatever, right? Cause that's.
Or just take it, it's the same thing.
Two, drive your king away.
Sorry, what? Oh, rook F two, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's probably critical.
So, rook F two, King G three, and then go after the Queenside pawns?
With rook B two?
Uh, rook A two, cause B two, you just take on E three.
But. This I have a hard time believing in for, for Black.
Yeah, I, I agree. This is probably a draw, so maybe I went wrong.
Here, here, here is, I think, this is my best shot, as ridiculous as King D one was.
Right.
It looked kind of strong here. And I can play passively. I mean, I don't know, H six is a little bit.
What if I gain a tempo on this whole line? What if I play, um, so King D one, rook D eight check? Cause you're not threatening to take on C three, and then I can go to C eight next move.
Isn't that annoying? Now, I don't wanna play King C one. Okay, yeah, this is disastrous. I think the best positions I got in this line are when I castled. But I agree, this is look, this is looking very bad for, for Black.
I think that they feel that way.
For white.
For white, I think that they feel that way because your evaluation of the double rook end game is not. As confident.
No, I, uh.
Does that make sense?
I, I know what you're saying.
But I think you're, I think you're underestimating that you're there.
No, I, uh, I, I just had, I had some like vaguely. Like, I got a single rook ending at one point. I don't know when I did that. Uh, I don't know what variation I got a single rook ending, but I felt like it was like vaguely drawable.
Yeah. I mean, any of these practically like, there's chances, but.
Uh, anyway, uh, let's go, let's go back to chapter twelve. Oh, we're in chapter twelve, excuse me. Um. This is all stemmed from the two Bishop D three variation. Um.
Which is only one of the moves.
Yeah. Hilarious, right? The other one was Rook A two. I also wanna point out, um. Silman gives this variation.
Ida six, what is, what's the point?
Uh, so this is sort of forced? Right, you, you gotta defend your pawn. Rup row.
Hmm.
There's no B four.
Cute. Uh, I mean, okay, even if white loses castling.
Let's go back?
Nah, King F two, King F two.
King F two?
Uh.
Then I'm coming in?
Right.
I think you wanna keep me out?
Yeah. Oh, it's a pain.
So after King E two, your bishop gets trapped. Uh, yes, you know, something like this.
Yeah, and rook C three coming, or, no, eh, you could play, yeah, and White's pieces is just, coordination is awful.
Yeah, so this is a cool move. Um, although I, I, I have to say I could not refute this, so seems equally good. Um, but let's look at the game continuation of rookie two. Determination, are you the only one with me? Oh, I've got a Doberman.
Yep, he's listening.
Cool. Um, so Doberman, feel free to type any answers that you, uh, want. To, I see that you're, you're focused on your game mostly, but you know, if, if you ever feel, feel the, feel the desire. I'll type your answers. Um, it's, uh, Black to play an awesome move.
Black to play an awesome move?
Yeah.
Uh. Is Knight C five not awesome enough?
Uh, Knight C five is probably a good move. But now, um. We've given, we've given white a little bit of time, and if I could, I would castle.
If you could, you would castle? Yeah.
And you know, White's position is vaguely sensible.
Maybe it shouldn't be.
Um, and I think, uh, we can do better, we can make him less vaguely sensible.
Yeah, alright, uh, Queen on D four is a good piece. Knight C six looks stupid, but like Knight B eight to C six.
Knight B eight.
Really?
Yep.
I don't, oh, man, um.
Here, let me, let me make, uh, I have to make another chapter, cause white castles here. Um.
Mister, this, figure out if I can find anything that I like better for. Mister, this, figure out if I can find anything that I like better for black. This knight B eight looks, I'm upset if knight B eight's the best move in that position. Probably it is, like, you know, someone's prob- pretty, pretty good at investigating these things.
Um, I, well, well, let's, I feel like the only other real option is knight C five.
I think you play queen C five.
Uh, oh, god, what position is this? So many variations. We're in the rook A two. Let's promote that. Pro- rook A two, uh, queen C five.
Yeah.
Crazy. Takes.
Knight takes? Don't walk into bishop takes B five?
Uh.
It's a trap.
No, castles.
Yeah.
I castle. I castle.
Castles before?
A, A four?
Yeah. Uh, probably I would play that rather than knight B eight, if only because I.
Uh, it's principled.
Wouldn't evaluate, yeah, I, I wouldn't evaluate the positions after knight B eight. I just.
Let's go to chapter thirty four. Um, white ca- are you fucking joking me? I forgot to enable casting. That's, that was my one job. That was my one job. Chapter thirty five, we're casting. Uh, and what was your point, determination? What was your point behind knight B eight?
Uh, play knight C six.
Knight C six. Um, queen has to move, should probably guard C two. Cause that's a little bit of a problem point for us. Uh, text gives queen D two. I don't know about any other move. That seems sensible to me, right?
Yeah, I guess there's also like queen C five or.
Queen C five. Getting crazy over here.
No, it's just, let's be active, right?
No, I know, um. Queen C five, that?
But the pawn is weaker on. B six and B seven, also the knight is.
Yeah, but where, where's your queen going?
D six? Can I play into D six? Hmm. It's gonna cost you time to take the pawn.
What pawn?
Not rather than E three.
Oh, D six, haha, I, I flipped coordinates.
Gotcha. It seems that I could have played in here.
That's interesting. That, that is certainly interesting. I'll take it and play this.
So bishop D three.
I know. A little bit, uh, uh, a little bit of this.
D one? Please give me cheapos.
Rook, rook D one?
Rook D one, yeah.
Please give you what?
Give me cheapos. Sheep tricks.
Now I'm worried. Can I take this? I don't. Oh, you bishop H seven. Well.
Yeah.
Um, is that, is that so great?
Probably not, but it's something. I can also.
You know, back.
I can also play, if I think my bishop is better than your knight, I can play bishop F one, and your knight has to move, and then I can take on B five. Which probably is. Yeah. Keep the bishop on the board to defend C two.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Like knight F five, take on B five.
So maybe, so taking, uh, but taking denies you this possibility, or uh, allows this possibility. So what if I do like this?
Then I'm upset, um.
You're still, you're still bishop H seven.
Yeah. Do I have D seven here? Since your rook is so very well placed?
I'll do this.
Okay, and then A four.
A four?
Yeah, I don't wanna sit on A three being a weakness forever. Do you?
But I trade my weakness.
Okay, but. To A seven.
Bishop H seven?
No, so, no, I'll take on, I'll play rook takes A four, and then my rook will come into A seven. No, rook C one. Yeah, then. I thought I had something here. I may be wrong.
I've, I've munched quite a few pawns on my way around.
Well, you're only up a pawn right now, right?
Does D seven, does D seven count? I guess it counts.
I can, I should be able to hold onto it with bishop B five for the time being.
That's true.
But no, there's, there should be trick here.
Really?
Yeah, cause you, okay, there it is. You have back rank problems and your rook can't. Your rook on C six can't come back to the back rank, so I can play rook C to A one with the point of rook to A eight.
Okay.
And then even if you take on D three, you have to give away the rook, and I keep the D seven pawn, I think.
King F eight.
Right? Oh, I don't keep the pawn, do I? Hmm. But I get some pawns back. King E seven.
Oh, you can take the knight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, I assumed you took on D three.
Well, I, maybe I should, right?
Yeah. But then rook A eight in this whole line, you won't tempo slower.
Yeah, now I just, I just have nothing. I'm lost.
Yeah.
Totally lost. Interesting. Yeah, I didn't value that. How did we get here? Oh, I played B six.
Trickiness.
I'm not totally sold on that. B six bullshit. Uh, I can't do that, um. Queen C five. So we're trying to boot you out. You, you, you said, nah, rogue, I'm coming straight in, I'm crashing the party.
Yeah.
What if I do? Like something like this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the, the point of the position is that if we exchange the, uh, C two pawn for the B five pawn. And black keeps control of the C file, he should have some pull, right?
I agree.
So. Sense. To me, at least. Maybe that's what I have to do. Can I play A four now that your queen is? No. Knight B four is a nice discovery. Um.
I'm threatening knight B four no matter what.
Yeah, so maybe I do just have to take on B five to get out of the discoveries.
With, uh, the queen?
Yeah.
Or again, I have knight B four there.
Yeah, I think you should play knight B four.
Cause you, you sort of have to play A four.
Alright. Since we played rook A two, might as well play rook B two.
Then, then A three really hangs.
Yeah, that's, but then I get C four in.
Yeah, I can't, I can't take this though. Not, or I can't take this in a way that I'm super thrilled about taking it. He's not so easy to take.
A two.
What? Oh.
The rook on A two, the other one. Before, right?
Ah, ha, 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 ha. I'm ridiculous. So yeah, if you play this. Then, then that's probably not great. Would you wanna play here, C four?
C four, yeah.
Really? I don't believe you.
I don't either, but I have to try.
Ain't that the truth? That's all we can ask out of life.
Maybe you just play D four and my bishop is dumb.
Oh, I didn't even think of that. I was looking at knight D three.
Hmm, yeah, but rook B B one.
Or maybe, maybe I can, you know, get some, maybe I can swap a runny.
Pretend that the file of means something here. There's no penetration squares. I guess A two, but. Don't feel like it means too much in this position. So take on D five. And then bishop. Uh, oh, you're taking back with the pawn. Hmm.
How? Oh, oh, I could take that with a knight. Yeah, let me do that.
Yeah.
God damn it.
I mean, they're both, you have to consider both, right?
Yeah.
Um, but then bishop C four. Well, you can play knight B four again if you want.
I can't. I was thinking, I was thinking about playing, oh, is this not an issue for you?
I didn't think so. I didn't really consider it, um. What's your threat? If I just play, yeah, if I play rook C one, is that just fine though?
Probably.
Just move the rook anywhere.
It's probably fine. Uh, is that?
Yeah, it's annoying.
You have rook B to B one.
Yeah.
But then I, then I go rook A two.
Yeah, okay, so maybe.
Black has some pull here.
May, alright, maybe it's better to play rook FB one. Protected. Now play rook A one, see where it gets you.
But now maybe I do like this.
It's a move you can play.
I say like, your rooks are doubled on the B five.
So maybe I should fix that, rook D two?
Rooked D two.
You want a pawn? Please take a pawn.
No, I'm okay, thanks.
Just get tired of taking my pawns?
Uh, you know, this one, this one looks a little lethal.
Yeah, but then rook D seven, I don't know, king F two maybe?
King F two, I will take this.
Our rooks get there in time. Yeah, I have to play G three, but my rook is on D two, so there's no, like, I don't have to worry about you doubling on the seventh. I have time to play G three.
But so you're gonna play G three here?
I'm gonna play G three, pawn down, and the compensation.
Then you're not getting.
Yeah, but before, yeah, and it takes away a part of the point there.
But I think maybe you have to take the seventh, but then check.
Your rooks are passive. No, no. In, in the G three line, your rooks are passive.
That's possible. I'm not, I'm not claiming it's winning.
Yeah.
Uh, G, G three, this.
B six. I'll play rook B six, keep the other rook on this, yeah. Keep the other rook on the second rank.
I was gonna say like rookie two.
I think this is just more after it.
Is this annoying?
I hope not, um. King G two and, no, rook, rook DB two, I'll give you the check, and then just play king F three. We can exchange off rooks, but this. Should be a draw.
That's entirely possible.
Cause you, if you wanna keep the pawn, you have to go back to C seven, or you have to keep the rook on, uh, C seven.
Yeah, um.
Not with my chances there.
Give me a second.
Sure.
I'm just, I'm just looking at if I'm getting anywhere with active play.
King G four? I don't trust king E four. H five, yeah, is a move you wanna get in, but king G five is my king scary.
I don't think so.
I mean, I guess you have to play king G seven. Do you have to play king G seven? At some point, right?
Yeah, at some point. Yeah, I don't feel like I've made noticeable. Oh, I have an ID, oh, it doesn't quite work.
What you got?
I was, I was gonna try and get some combination of rook takes H two and rook takes G three in. Um, but I just don't have enough moves, cause I have to start with this, and then, you know, you just do that probably. Well, maybe you don't.
No, I just take on B seven.
You take, yeah, yeah, that's, that's more accurate. It's much more accurate. Yeah, I, I don't feel like I'm making, well, do, do I have it now? No, you always have H four. No, I, 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 oh, oh, it's so close, it's so close. That almost works.
That's a nice idea to shoot for, but.
No, it doesn't work. Um, yeah, how, how did I get to any of this? We were looking at, oh, we were looking at queen C five again, and trying to figure out what on earth happens after queen C five. I'm just gonna turn on the engine really quick and see what we're, what we're saying. I like this B six, I like your queen D six, and then it says, fuck you.
What? I mean, I guess that's a move. So what does white do?
It's, it's telling white to trade.
Problem is if you just play bishop D three, black can play like queen C three or something, and then the queen looks dumb, right? Or the black, sorry, the white queen's almost getting.
Yeah, the, the white queen's really out of play over there.
Yeah.
Um.
Um.
Yeah, this is interesting.
And bishop D three, rook A C eight, rook F two, uh, rook C one? No, you can't play rook C one, so you have to play rook F two.
Wait, in what line? Sorry?
So in this one, so you take on C seven, rook takes C seven, bishop D three. You can't play, so rook A C, and you can't play rook C one because of knight takes B three. Uh, so you have to play rook F two. But.
What a sorry state of affairs this is.
But, but white is holding.
White, white is, is absolutely holding. Uh, the engine's going minus point five.
Okay.
It wanted, it wanted to go this.
Yeah, okay. But what's? Eleven. Or, ah, I guess I can't play king F two, but. Non-forcing moves?
I don't know. Maybe I'm threatening like some sort of B four.
B four, A four, should be okay.
Yeah, I agree. But B four, A four. Like.
Like, always the follow-up B five.
He- here's the thing. How are we defending this pawn really? When I play rook over next move?
Uh, I think you may have disconnected.
Disconnected?
No, to play, you know, the local moves thing.
Oh, no, I'm just saying.
I'm not seeing any of the.
I'm saying like, a- after, you know, okay, I'm white, I'm terrible. Um, like. I guess this is a thing. But then you, this is a thing, no?
Hmm, take on B five?
Oh, you can do that.
My structure's still so bad.
No, this, this looks reasonable, reasonable to hold. Anyway, you wanna, you wanna go back to mainline?
Sure.
Chapter twelve, rook A two, oh, we did this. Um, yeah, we got to rook A two, knight C five. No, no, not knight C five. Rook A two, knight B eight. Uh, castles, oh, fuck.
Yes, yeah.
It's in chapter, chapter thirty five, I think.
Sure.
Chapter thirty five was castles. Knight C six. Uh, book move was queen D two. And we give a little chook.
Nice.
Wait, you know it?
Hmm?
This is. Uh, no, just kidding, just kidding, just kidding, JK, JK, JK. Uh, chapter thirty five, we, uh, queen to, queen to, we give a little chook. We play a little king H one. Uh, and then we play queen A five. And your position was a little bit sad. Cuz if you take this, then, you know, I can do things like this or this, or this, this.
But I wonder.
It's very possible that this is holdable as well.
Yeah.
But it's Silman likes showing us the cool maneuvers.
Oh man, think of the pieces flying everywhere. If only there were books written on, and, endgames.
Yeah, if only this, this guy named Silman wrote some sort of endgame book.
Yeah, he's, he covers technical again, I, I was being fustitious about, um, you, or, um, things like that, that are, um, I, I cover. Mission if we just took the queens off.
Uh, you're dropping out just a little bit there.
Uh-oh.
What'd you say about taking the, I heard taking the queens off, what about it?
Yeah, um, sorry, so there's books like Endgame Strategy or things like that, that cover endgames that still have, that are not technical?
Yeah, yeah, like.
That are just.
Strat- strategic, where you have to plan.
Um, and I guess that was more what I was alluding to, but, uh, yeah. Ah, I. We, even looking at the position after bring the knight to C six and, you know, the queens, like the final position there, I still feel like even, like seeing the end point of my calculations there. Think I would have gone for the endgame.
After Queen C three check?
Yeah.
Or, or Queen C three, maybe not checked, depending on when you're playing Queen C three, oh, or in the original position, Queen C three check.
No, no, the ninety seven. What are, what were the moves? Ninety seven, Rook A two, Queen C three.
Queen C is rejecting. Uh, yeah, it's certainly possible, but now, now do I have Queen D two? My rook's not hanging anymore.
But, uh, sorry, sorry, uh, let me play Knight C five there, sorry, the, the endgame that we had with a knight on E four and the.
Oh, so that's in the, that's in the castles line.
Yeah, or like castles or not.
Chapter thirty four. Chapter thirty two? I don't know what chapter we're in.
Right.
I don't know how we got here.
Does anyone really?
Uh, no, clearly. Was this a Rook A two line or a Bishop D three line?
It was a Rook A, I guess, it was a Bishop D three line. Bishop D three, I liked the endgames, Rook A two.
So Rook A two, he can deny us those, those lines.
Yes, yeah. That's annoying.
So after ninety seven, Rook A two, oh, you wanna play Queen C five?
I could, yeah, I could see playing Queen C five, I don't like it though, tomorrow I look at it.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
It's not.
Knight B eight probably just the best move.
As, as terrible as that makes you feel.
Yeah. Did you know something about chess? Have analyzed those positions.
Alright. Uh, you wanna keep going?
Um, let me see, I actually, I need to get some food.
For sure.
So, I think I'm gonna call it here, but it was a lot of fun.
Literally just you and me, yeah, I really enjoy analyzing with you. I think, um, you, you bring out good things in me. In, in, in the way that, in the way that you, you, you question my initial assumptions. Um, because I'll just be like, oh, this looks terrible, and you're like, eh, well, let's, let's look at it, and I'm like, oh, okay, maybe it's not so terrible. Um, and I think that's, that's really, that's really valuable.
I really like analyzing positions like this, cuz you can really dig very deeply into them. And like, sure, following through a book, you can learn quite a bit about what the author wants you to learn, but analyzing a positions in a book, you can learn a lot about chess along the way too.
Totally, no, I think, I think this is super cool, cuz, yeah, I mean, Knight B eight, C six, it's a good plan, but it's clearly not the only plan in this position. And I, I think it, it helps reveal why, um, in the original position, Black is actually significantly better, he has sort of a wealth of options that, that make good things happen.
Okay.
Uh, anyway, uh, it's been a pleasure, thank you so much, Determination, and, uh, hopefully I'll see you next Saturday.